Okay. Good evening. I'm Pat Gales and I'm the chairperson of the Historical Commission. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:05, 6:03. Okay, this meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters, or those reasonably anticipated by the chair, will be discussed at the meeting. Not all of the items may be listed. In fact, be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. The recording will be available on Dayton's YouTube channel at a later time. Okay, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
Who's your friend, Ken?
Yeah. Got a friend.
I see that.
Okay, the secretary's showing the rear end. He's helping, come on. Secretary's report. Everyone received it? Yes, okay. A motion to waive the reading of the minutes of July 12th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Bill? We'll have to vote, Bill.
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And the chair is also an aye. I have some changes, of course, but Jonathan's name has an A at the end instead of an O in the list of he was absent. And then, under the preservation planning, to delete and other people, question mark, and put in Peter Stott, parentheses, MHC, and Michael Steinitz, S-T-E-I-N-I-T-Z, from the MHC. So those are the two amendments that I have. Does anyone else have any? Okay. A motion to accept the minutes of July 12th as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and we'll, any further discussion? All right, we'll vote. Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Okay. The minutes of August 1st, 2022, our Boston Post-Kane presentation. Did everyone receive those? Any, okay. Motion to waive the reading of the minutes of August 1st.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Oh, I should've just put them together. Motion to accept the minutes of August 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Okay, moving on to the budget. I have the FY '22 budget that ended on June 30th, 2022. We ended with, well, the balance was $469, $469.63, with 300 of that was encumbered to pay the CAI Technologies. So our ending balance was $169.63. I did not receive an expenditure ledger as of yet for August, so we will look at that at our next meeting in September. Our FY '23 beginning budget is $1,600, and we haven't had any expenditures from that. So that's the budget report. Okay, next is, under unfinished business, the discuss review, the James Briggs Garden sign. I sent everyone the pictures of the signage on Lincoln Avenue that I shared with Jenna and Tanya also. Jenna did email me back and she liked the design of it. The price is still an issue, of course, so I did reach out to one company, this Paner, for some information. It makes the signs that have the two legs and it has a slanted face where your information graphic is. So I chatted with a woman today, and the total cost of a sign like that runs between $1,500 and $1,600. And it would be 36 by 24 inches, which is their standard size, she said, for kind of historic kinds of things. The two legs are buried into the ground. The breakdown estimate would be, the graphic sign, the design of the information we want to say, would be like $365. The aluminum pedestal base runs 580 to 620. And if we want them to do the graphic design work, that's like $500. That's where we send them all the information and they lay it out, print it, and all of that. So...
I'm sorry, what is it, $365?
$365 is for the graphic sign, for the design of it, where the information is going to be. I also had shared the picture with the town administrator, so I'll continue to work with him for the signage, because we want the, all the signage to be the same, the branding to be the same kind of looking. And he thought that the ones on Lincoln Avenue would be appropriate also for over here at James Briggs Garden, so. So that's that. The one on Lincoln Avenue. I don't know who did that.
Ken, who paid for that?
Do we know? Oh, you're muted. Good one, Ken. Oh, you're just faking it, yeah.
I don't know who paid for it. That's been a while, I think it's been there.
Yeah.
We could all just move our lips.
We could. So, anyway, so more work on that. Bill, you had sent some information, thank you, about James Briggs this afternoon. I thought you were going to be writing a paragraph. Didn't you mention like 15 lines or something last time?
I don't think so. I think we, I thought we had agreed that I would supply the information that people could pick and choose, and because I, you know, I don't know what the specifications of this paragraph should be, and I think you do, or somebody does, other than me. I don't know.
Okay, all right. We'll put something together. I thought you had mentioned last time 15 lines, but that's okay, we'll figure it out. So, okay. And Rafa, you said you had a high-resolution picture that we would be using? Okay. Is it of the house in good shape?
In good shape.
Okay.
Yeah, inside and out.
Okay, excellent. Next is, so we'll continue working on that. We're making progress slowly, but we're getting there. Our webpage, I sent everyone kind of like my little synopsis, just totally my opinion, because I was kind of like trying to organize my thinking around it. To go to the new website, all of our agendas and minutes, well, 2021 and 2022, the link for the Historical Marker Program and the Demolition Delay Bylaw. So that's what I think should go. The other minutes, from pre-2007 through 2020, delete those. I have, like, most of those on my computer, so we can save them to a thumb drive, the agendas and all the minutes to a thumb drive, and then put it in our file cabinet at Town Hall, so that it's there forever. So, the things to, do we want these to go to the new website or not? There's a lot of information about the James Briggs House.
That's what we're going to do.
Let that go? Okay.
What's the point?
Right.
What's the point? The house is there.
Yeah. Why we should save old buildings in an article about six practical reasons, I think. No, let it go. The myths about, 10 top myths about historical preservation.
I can find my updated version. It's probably like, what, 10 years old?
Okay. 15 questions to consider when a historic resource is threatened. I know that's from MHC, yeah.
Yep. Go.
Let it go?
Let it go.
Okay. Because I think we can find some updated things to put on. Maybe information about national register districts and local historic districts.
What about a list of all the houses?
And a list, yeah, the list of the houses. You mean the ones that have markers?
No.
Oh, I thought...
Oh, that's, okay. The list, we should have the list of the ones...
That would be a nice thing to have on there, if anybody wanted to look at a glance in it. If it would increase, you know.
And also, so you're thinking of the inventory, like, from our surveys that we're doing?
Yes. Should we include John Rees' house?
Yeah, because I think they're, we'll, yeah, because we'll have that electronic copy, so.
The whole inventory? What inventory are you talking about?
The work that the preservation consultant is doing for us, that, those houses, those forms.
How many developments in that, right?
There's 90 forms, some area forms.
That would be eligible for, what, the Dayton website? How would you present that, as a file name?
I guess we'd have to work with Leanne on that. She's doing that, so we can talk with her. She's in charge of the migration to the new web bit. What do you call them, a web server? Is that what they are? Yeah. All right. We had news items there, and I thought that, one, these were kind of dated.
Yeah, remove.
Remove those? Okay.
Of course, there's such and such things, removing them, they'll be in cyberspace forever, anyway.
I know cyberspace exists forever, so. All right, let's have a motion to remove the items as discussed from the website as discussed tonight.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye, okay. All right, next is the historical sites for the Dayton Rail Trail Project. They had a meeting on July 26th, which I wasn't able to attend, but I had the chance to listen to the recording, because they sent me the file for that. Ken, you went to that, that was very informative, wasn't it, the rail trail meeting?
I thought it was, and I'm looking forward to actually a site visit.
Yeah, yeah. The site visit may happen in August. The consulting firm, Worsley and Witten Group, they're working on the design concepts of the trail, and they're planning on having the final concepts to the public by mid-September by the firm and DCR, so they probably have some public meetings at that point in time as to what the trail is going to look like. So these are just the conceptual ideas. So we'll continue working on our historic sites for that. Rafa and I have met with Myrna, the town historian, Myrna Santos, to get some information about the historic sites along the trail, and we're going to be beginning to write up some of the identified sites. So, Bill, did you have any more information for the railroad piece?
Well, what I sent originally was, was the identification of the railroad stations and where they are. The only other thing, what I'm planning to do is, I have a collection of pictures that, of those stations, except for the Dayton Main Station, which would have been behind the landscape company there on County Street.
All right, all right, yeah.
So, that's the only, I've never, I do not know if one exists, I just don't know, I don't have one.
Yes, I do believe Myrna has one. So like, if we can combine any photos or anything to...
I saw the photos that you, that you meant, that you passed to me last time, that was Myrna, I think, who gave you those, right?
Oh, God, no. None of my things came from Myrna.
Well, what, are we talking about...
What I brought?
The pictures of the railroad stations?
Yeah, what I brought was mine.
Oh, that was yours?
Yeah, I didn't get anything from Myrna.
Oh, okay. So I have those already in my collection, duplicates, so what I'll do is, I'll issue all of them that I have, which is, oh, the freight station, that was on Main Street. The Main Street, I mean, the main station, I don't have. The, what else? Oh, the North Dayton Station, which, I have one picture that shows the station and the freight house, they were together, maybe a couple hundred feet apart, so I have that picture. And then the Center Street Station, or some people call it the Berkeley Station, because people from Berkeley used to come across...
Yeah, but it's rarely known as the Segregance Station.
Segregance, but it also had, also was known as unofficially, the Berkeley Station. So I have, I have the pictures like you, I have all of those, the, you know, the conductor standing down with his watch and so forth, and I have, so what I can do is just, that's about it. I mean, I have, I've determined where they were and their current state, which is non-existent, none of them. And I have pictures of them all, multiple pictures on the Segregance Station, like you had. I'm pretty sure I have, but I will submit those, but if you have one that I missed, you can let me know, right?
So what are you going to, scan those in and share them? Is that what you're going to do?
I'm going to put it, I have a Google Drive, I don't know how, did anybody get that, that old 90s bike trail thing off of, nobody had any problems getting that off of the Google Drive and everything?
No, that worked.
Yeah, you just double-click on it. So I have, I'll do the same thing, I'll put all those pictures on there.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Moving on to preservation planning, our FY '21 survey and planning grant, the one that's wrapping up. Stacy's continues to work on the final edits of the area forms and Form Bs. The Mass Historic Commission numbers have been assigned, and they've been sent to the CAI Technologies for the mapping. I have been reviewing some of the final edits, and so far, the comments that we've made, the town historian made, and Mass Historical Commission made are being incorporated into those documents, so. All right, that's moving along. Our next survey update, Phase Two, which is the one for Lincoln Village and Mount Hope, the RFQ is out. It was available on the procurement page of our, of the town website on July 20th. I sent it to the list of preservation consultants from last year and placed it on the Mass Hist Preservation List Serve. So responses are due by August 18th, which, believe it or not, is next week, by 4:00 PM. We may have to schedule a meeting in between our September meeting and then to start the process for the hiring of a consultant.
Have you received any so far?
I don't know. So, because they go to the town, to Mike, he's the procurement officer. So we'll see. So next is our historical marker application. On this, we added, Rafa and I talked with, I talked with Mike and I worked with Rafa, how to clarify how the marker information is used for publicity. So I sent the changes to everyone, they were in red in the document, so basically, the big change would be on page, did everyone read it?
I read it, but I'm just trying to get it so I can follow along with you. I didn't print it out. Let's see, which email, that was...
I don't know which email it was.
Changes in the red. We added a consent...
So we added a consent for publicity, so that we can use their name, home photos and information, and local social media, and other related communications, or they can do not consent to that. They can still get the marker on their house, but it's up to them for the publicity. And the photos would be outside photos, no inside photos. So that's the change for, on that. And then there was just the housekeeping one that I found on page four, the payment, it says $125 only, so I added plus tax and shipping, so that was clear. And then our update date, if we update it tonight, would be the 9th. So, does anyone have any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the changes on our historical marker application. Okay, is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? All right, Pat?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Okay. Under new business, I was at the library, I was talking with Drossel and the library director, and I was telling her how we're, we want to have publicity around our, when we get all of our survey forms done and the maps and everything, to have a, like, a local open house so people can see it and know what kind of information. She said, oh, that would be a great program if we could do something jointly, because they do have a lot of local history resources in the library. And I said, oh, that, you know, as we plan along, that would be a good idea, and I would bring it to you guys to see what you thought.
We have a display gaze, too.
Huh?
A display gaze, like, again, rotating exhibits of...
No, she's talking about just a program, so, you know, like, when we present to the public, the survey forms, the Form Bs, she could come and present and say what else the library has for a local resource. Kind of like a combination program. And we'd have to work out the details for it, but I thought the idea was good when it shows cooperation between entities, you know, so we'll go, we can talk with her more.
Do you think enough people would come out for the presentation? I'm not against working with the library.
It probably depends, I don't know. Sometimes you get crowds and sometimes you get 10 people, maybe four, you know? But...
Just refreshments will be...
I was going to say, use the ice cream socializing.
There we go.
Free food. Zucchini, Ken.
Oh, boy.
All right, so we'll continue chatting, because it's a ways off until we get our final documents and, you know, from Stacy's spies, anyway. The weights and measure cabinet, I shared with you the email about it that I sent to Mike. It's in Town Hall, and it is a historic artifacts, and according to my understanding, it was under the weights and measurement agent. I don't know if you saw the email from Mike this afternoon, but yeah, the weights and measurement is under the building department. This cabinet, Myrna brought, Myrna Santos brought to Mark Pacico's attention, and Mark brought it to my attention, and so here we are. It is quite historic, so I will work with Mike and Jim, I'll try to set up something with a meeting.
Where is it currently?
The cabinet, it's in Town Hall, when you walk in the front door, on the left side.
Expose this cabinet right now.
Yeah.
Wow, it has all the...
It has, yeah.
Weights, scales, and so forth.
Yep. Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty impressive. So we'll continue working on that. Now, 2120 Water Street, and the Quorum Shipyard District is for sale. And it's, I drove, I just drove by it by accident on Sunday night, well, Sunday evening, and I was shocked at the condition. I didn't realize it had, it was empty.
2120 is what?
That is the Hathaway, John Hathaway House.
Is it 1600s?
1700s.
1700s?
Yep.
So is this a, this is not a current picture?
Yes.
Is it ever since? It's on Zillow.
Yeah, that's on Zillow, like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not falling down.
Not yet, no.
Unless you want to purchase it.
Aren't there pictures inside?
Yeah, I don't have the inside pictures, but yeah, there were pictures. So, this is obviously one of our more important historic homes, so we need a plan of action. I read the little description on Zillow, and it doesn't mention anything about it being in a historic district, you know, so...
Omit that information.
I don't know, so...
It's on Zillow?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay. Must have just gone on, because I always look at...
It's been on for 10 days.
10 days.
If you're not interested...
And is that the, oh, that's the printout, okay.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it hurt though, just to mention?
Right. So, one question is, do we want to share this advertisement on our Facebook page? And Ken, would that be appropriate, our Facebook page?
I think you might, you might want to ask Mike.
And I thought about, maybe we should contact the realtor and have a chat with the realtor.
You'd have to get the owner, the seller's permission to do that. The realtor doesn't have any authority, although he can contact.
He would be the contact.
Contact, yeah.
Who's the realtor?
I don't know who the realtor is. Does it say?
The Mellow.
The Mellow Group?
The Mellow Group.
Was it built in 1700? That's what they're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Built in 1700?
What's the date, when was it built?
Because John Hathaway was a...
Boat builder.
A boat builder with Thomas Quorum.
That's pretty neat.
And they live right next door to each other, right?
Right.
But Ken, you already know that.
I do?
Yes. And then later, it was a store, it was the Whitmarsh Store. It's always been something down there, and it has, of course, it's part of the National Register of Historic Districts. I looked at Macris, and they had, it's on there, too, was a general retail store, single-family dwelling house, a tailor shop, a tavern, you know, so it's been a little bit of everything.
Does it show any interior pictures on this hole?
Yes, it does.
How does it work inside? It's not so good.
Collated.
So, before we reach out to the realtor, should we clear that with the mic, too?
Probably.
Okay.
We've got to be careful.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. All right, we will do that, I can do that tomorrow. And then if it's A-OK with Mike and everything, we can proceed to, with our plan, okay. Under correspondence, we have the resignation of Jonathan Lawrence, and we received that after our meeting. The selectman voted and accepted his resignation, and so I'd also like to say to Jonathan, you know, thank you for his service to the commission. And also, the official resignation of Pam Nickerson came in, and we knew that that was coming, and, you know, great thanks to Pam, too, for her work for the commission. And I don't see any public here for public input. Under other, the library has a building committee group, and I've been asked to join this as the plans move forward for the library at Smith Memorial Hall, so I will represent us there. Open commission positions, there are now three. As we move forward, because our quorum is four, in order to have a meeting, we need to all be here. in order to have a meeting, we need to all be here. So I guess if we can't, just make sure that we let each other know. And Bill, you had some concerns about?
Yeah, I mean, have, have you asked the commission, in your, in our collective memory here, has the commission ever had a quorum of four or a quorum of less than four other than absentees? In other words, in other words, where you have nothing, unless you were to get somebody else to join, that kind of situation? I don't know if it's ever had.
I don't know.
It's always been, you've had four and then when somebody say, go, whatever, then you, you're out of action for that particular meeting.
That's the way I understand it, yeah.
Is that the case? Well, you were, you were there. You were 10 years on the commission, right?
Yes, I was.
You don't recall or anything like that? Do you recall? You never recall a systemic, in other words, where you hold, you actually have no, it's like not having enough money to pay your bills kind of thing. So you don't recall that, that kind of, so you've always been.
A meeting that we couldn't have because we didn't get the four people.
Right.
Then the following month, maybe we would have four people. And then go two months and you didn't. It was rough going for quite a while.
So this might be, in our collective history, memory, this may be the first time where we've had four. Well, no, no, we had four before, like you said, but then somebody, but. So it's just not a good place to be, I think. You really need to.
Right, it's not.
Call somebody or, and what about it, like, I'm just thinking, the Historic Society, not the commission.
The Historical Society.
Anyone in there might be. No?
Pat and I have talked to people.
Okay.
We've asked, I've asked other people.
We asked a photographer at the Firecracker Festival.
Yep.
We've asked anybody we can think of.
Right, so if you could do the same, that would be helpful. I know at the selectmen's meeting, they announced the number of positions that are open back at every meeting. So, you know, it's advertised there. Is it on the, I think it's on the web, website. Is it on the website? No, I don't think they list them there, now that I said that. So yes, we've been actively seeking people, but certainly anyone who's interested just has to get the volunteer form from the Board of Selectmen's Office, from Leanne or Karen, and fill it out and come join us.
Do we, excuse me, do we have it on our Facebook page?
Is it, yes, is it on our Facebook page? Yep, it's on the Facebook page.
Under the thread, it says, "We want you."
We want you. Okay, all right. Wow.
Is there a spot on the agenda for other comments or anything before you adjourn? In other words, I have something about, well, you didn't put on, for instance, CPC up.
Oh, I forgot, all about the CPC, yep. Please do, that's my, I forgot.
Okay.
Okay, CPC.
All right, so we had a major reorganization. So.
I heard you, you're the new vice chair.
I'm the new vice chair, can you believe that?
They like you.
I was always wondering. Either that, they don't like me because they know it's a lousy job or something, you know, but.
Okay.
Anyway, so, so the kind of, uh, we're going over, not only, it wasn't just the reorganization of the personnel, but we're, thanks to Kevin Smith, who I think is going to great, going to be a great chairman, until he's not. But that's true about everything. But so, we're trying to streamline that whole application process so that it, before, we were kind of stumbling through it, because it's like we didn't really know much about it after, after Tim Ryan's left. So I think, I think things are going to be really good, you know, once we finish that off. The next meeting, we're going to talk about streamlining that. Oh, and then we have that guy Stuart Saginaw, whatever. He was, he's the head of the CPA, which is the Massachusetts equivalent, or the central.
Committee of Preservation.
Yeah. And he gave a great talk, you know, and lots of slides and answered a lot of questions that we had. One in particular, he had like a sort of a two dimensional block thing where what you, what kind of projects are okay and what are not okay. So when I saw the historic building in one box and you scan over to rehab, it was a rehab of a historic property, building or something. And then there were a lot of different boxes that some of us say, yes, some of us say, no. But one I was interested in is the historic box as a whole vertical. So I asked him on this library business, I told him, I said that we were, the town's going to repurpose, I said, I had an historic property. And I said, is repurposing okay? In other words, changing it to some other function? And he says, yeah, no problem, except he said that you couldn't, for instance, take the building and gut it and then put it as, in whatever you want. You would have to maintain the historical integrity of the interior. And I thought that was pretty important. I don't know, I mean, that sounds, it's not vague, actually. I think it's fairly clear. And the, the pictures on the, on the website, on the Dine website of the proposed interior looked to me like they were trying to, whoever did that design for them, looks like they were trying to maintain the auditorium part, you know, and, and maybe some of the, the wainscoting that's around the, things like that. So I'm just, and I mentioned it to Lanny, I was talking to him about it. And I said, you know, keep in mind that if you want CPC money for this project, you're going to have to adhere to some sort of interior integrity that it, that has some or a lot of what the original building had. And he says, oh, says, no, you know, oh, no, no problem, no problem.
But I do believe that is the intent. Am I right, Ken?
Yeah, we've had Joe Shea, who was basically, basically came up with that design for the building. Most of the building is not going to change. The exception is we're going to be adding, we're going to be adding a ramp to the stage, because that's where the kids are going to have their part of the library. So we're not taking a stage away, we're just adding a ramp in front of the stage. We're going to widen one of the doors, because it has to be ADA compliant. But that building has great bones and it has great woodwork, and we're not changing that. We, we're keeping all the doors, the solid wood, the doors. We are going, we're talking about, there's a kitchen. And to make it ADA compliant, we're going to raise the floor. We've got enough room, the ceiling's high enough. We're going to raise the floor, but it's, that's not gutting it, that's just adding it. And somebody, if they want, 100 years from now, can take that away and still have the same building there. And there's a stairs in the front of the building, inside, in the interior, where we're going to have the area for the teenagers. So not every teenager's into sports, and they want an area where they can read, they can talk. But they're not going to have access downstairs. So there was talk about eliminating this, eliminating the stairway to the basement. I suggested that we just cover the stairway, and that's what we're going to do. So the bill, I mean, the wainscoting is staying, the window, we're not changing the windows. There's very little that's going to be changed. Obviously, we're going to improve it, lighting and stuff like that. But the building is basically going to stay, stay the same. So I'm impressed with the design and the designer.
Okay.
Okay, just keep in mind, Ken, that whatever, whenever someone approaches the CPC with a, a, you know, an initial plan, it's a two-stage position. And then if it's, we decide whether it's okay to do this, whether it falls under the, and then at that, then, then the, you know, the more detailed proposal comes in. So I would expect to see, you know, some sort of package that shows the interior of the projected design even more than one. It would be nice to have like multiple plans or Plan A, B, C, whatever, because the CPC will have to determine it, whether or not the, the plan meets the state level requirements. That's all I'm saying.
Somebody from the library who spoke.
Right.
Yeah, who already presented, who did the presentation.
And you would share all of those expectations before applications are given, like with the, like.
Well, maybe, maybe this commission could get involved somehow. You're, you're going to be on that. So you, you're going to keep your, figure on the pulse there of that.
What I'm saying is if you have certain expectations criteria, then those should be known to anyone who's applying before your the first application. You know what I mean?
Well, I mean, that CPC isn't going to get involved in speculation about what it should be or something like that. But so we're just going to be taking the.
Yeah, but when you say three different plans, that's kind of what you're implying.
Well, it would, the reason I would say that is because if we didn't like one, then maybe another one might, rather than having to completely start, resubmit something. So I guess that would have to be in the first, you know, the initial proposal, which is because we would throw it out if, if it didn't meet any whatever state expectations. We could have Stuart back in the loop probably on that, to, you know, to, for him to focus in on what it is specifically. Or maybe, I'm not sure we're appropriate to have him review it, probably not. But he might be open to questions by email and things like that, or, I don't know. But, but I'm just saying that that is, um, could be a sticking point. It's for, you know, if CPC doesn't vote to do it, then you'll have to get the money from somewhere else. You know, you don't have to have, you're not under that restriction. That's all I'm saying, you know?
Could I comment on that?
Yeah.
I was involved when the Dine Historic Society went for a CPC grant back in 2017, and we only had to come up with our plan. Now, if we're going to ask for three plans for the library, I'm not sure who's going to pay for those three plans. We have, we're talking about, it's out for procurement, I believe. We're going to come up with a contract. It's probably going to be Joe Shea, who's come up with the initial design. I'm quite familiar with historic buildings. I wouldn't tolerate any major change in that building. And I don't believe Pat would either. And we'll, we'll have this one presentation that will, will, you know, give to the CPC. I don't anticipate a problem. There is no major changes that are going in the building. We're only talking about the main floor, we're not talking about the basement. The basement has a lot of good opportunities, that things that can happen in the basement. Right now, this is Phase One, we're talking about upstairs, the main floor. We're taking, quite frankly, there's a wall that was added probably 20 years ago, 15 years ago, on the stage. That wall's going to come down. It was never an historic, it was never part of the original building. You can just tell it's sheet rock, it's the regular two by fours. There's nothing that's really old. So I, I wouldn't anticipate that CPC would be upset with something like that. But there isn't that many changes that are going to happen in that building. This is an historic building. I love historic buildings and I wouldn't tolerate any changes. So it's, I mean, things like, we're going to add copper to the floor, because it's a library. You don't want people walking around, making a lot of noise. So it's going to be competent, not taking out the floor, but we're going to be putting copper in, on the floor, copper on the floor. So there's no major changes. That's my point. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Thanks, Bill, for updating us on CPC. Probably very exciting for the CPC, you know? Good, it's all good. All right, I think we're good. Is there anything else? Our next meeting is September 13th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. And saying that, and of course, if we have to schedule a meeting in between then for our grant preservation, hiring, consultant hiring, we will do that. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Rafa, is there a second?
No second.
There's no discussion? Let's vote, Pat? Rafa? Bill? I'm also an aye, and thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Yep, good night, Ken, have a good night.
Here we will.
All right, now I have to get this.